Yeah, Kansas, what I do to stand. No, not either. Definitely. Did a good job. Goby Chapman's not here today. Well, there's a lot of seniors.
This is the City of Harvey Special Council meeting. This is Thursday, December 12th, 2024. The Senate on my behalf. Advance for those of us present, please mark the self as such.
We have one more roll call. You can mark yourself present.
Next item on the agenda, an occasion to pledge allegiance. We devour heads. Every father of God becomes to you. Knowing that you have no boundaries, Lord. Knowing that you are all present and all knowing. And knowing that you are not constrained or restricted by time. But even though you are now, Lord, you are servants, who come before you are, oh God, and we come before you thanking you for this three hundred and sixty-five days that you have brought us forth, oh Lord. All the things that you have done during this period of time, oh Lord, we could not have imagined. All these things that you have done, oh Lord, we could not have conceived and could not have done by ourselves. But once again, it is always through your grace, your mercy, and your favor that we have been able to do anything, oh Lord. It has only been because of your will that these things are possible. Oh Lord, as we begin to go into a new year, we ask that you will continue to watch over us and guide us, oh Lord. That you will help this council to be a better counselor and to continue to do your will as a servant of your people. We ask that you will bring your spirit down on the city of Harvey so that it may begin to bask in what is your glory, oh Lord. So they may know what it's like to have a relationship with you, knowing that through that relationship, all things are possible, that we can do all things through Christ who has stricted us. That we know that you are all that we need and we can't have nothing else. Oh heavenly Father, we thank you so much. Because the words that are coming out of my mouth, they could not be enough. As the Scripture says, "And to watch and cry out, Lord", that wouldn't even be enough to thank you and to glorify you for everything that you have done. But all we can do come before you is mercifully and humbly say, "Thank you, God. Thank you so much for being in you who you are, and thank you so much for keeping you blessed in us." And we ask that you will continue to do so, oh Lord, and that you continue to have your spirit amongst us. Because we ask in your son, Jesus' name, amen. Next item on the agenda. Chair recognizes the fifth ward.
Motion. To take the irons. Me, New Business. Five, six, and seven is on the floor.
Five, six, and seven?
Yes, sir.
Do you need the second to that? If there isn't a second, five, six, and seven. There's a motion to honor this five, six, and seven of the New Business. And there's a motion, and then we had two so moves, so. Okay, so I got a motion by the fifth and the second, not the sixth. Um, before the for the ordinance, while the clerk is putting together that, just so you know what that is. That's a resolution five is the revenue decision approving the real estate sale agreement with highest ground LLC. The property is located at 16950 South Hawke, Austin. Six is ordinance approving a special use permit for Nora Retail LLC at 16930 Austin Street. And seven is a resolution approving the redevelopment agreement for J&amp;T Group of Illinois LLC comprehensive housing program. So we've got a vote. What she cares. Okay, um, so when it comes time after finishing four, we will have the last five, six, and seven. Now to number four, uh, on our agenda is retirement acknowledgement of Robert Brown, thirty-six years and ten months. And he is going to retire from the city of Harvey where he is. We have a well, they told me to make it short, so I'm gonna follow instructions as far as this is concerned. Um, so I'll just read it. Um, presenting a grateful appreciation to Robert G. Brown. Your commitment and hard work have made lasting impacts on our community. Thank you for your laboring dedication and excellence this December of 2024. So if you would be so kind, my friend, as to come up and, uh, and receive your plaque. So for those who don't necessarily know, um, Robert's contributions, it's probably like a lot of other, uh, employees here in the city of Harvey in that you have a lot of people that's doing a lot of work. And you don't, may not necessarily see that person, you may necessarily hear from that person, but you see the work that they do. You know, it's kind of like that. It's like the elves, uh, in that story about the cobbler and the shoes. You know, when elves came in the middle of the night and did all the work, and the cobbler had brandy shoes and didn't know how he, how he got them. Well, if I were to liken that to what we are today, he's one of those elves. He's one of those people that come out there and constantly get the work done. Um, knowing that at times he can be thankless, but he does it anyway. He's a Harvey resident too. Okay, so that's, that's six ward resident. So that, that's another thing, you know, and he cares for the city in which he lives. So, um, we'll be doing some other things for him as time goes on, but thank you. Thank you, Ken Robert. We really appreciate you. Thank you. And so, um, next item, uh, is approval of ordinances and residences for the city of Harvey. Uh, by the old business, by the New Business, B1. An ordinance making appropriations for corporate purposes for the city of Harvey fiscal year beginning in May 1, 2024 and ending May, uh, excuse me, ending April 30, 2025. This ordinance approves the budget for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2024 and ending April 30, 2025. Uh, we have a motion by the first, and a second by the third. Is there any discussion? Hearing line, cast your votes. What she cares.
That is ordinance number three, five, zero, two.
Next item on the agenda is an ordinance levying taxes in the city of Harvey for the fiscal year beginning May 1, 2024 and ending April 30, 2025. This ordinance approves the amount of taxes to be levied upon all property within the city of Harvey subject to taxation for fiscal year beginning May 1, 2024 and ending April 30, 2025. Um, I see a motion from the third, the second by the first. Is there any debate? Yes, sir.
Um, so we had a finance meeting. We had the opportunity to
I forgot to ask that. I was so sorry. Yeah.
So we had a finance meeting. We had the opportunity to have a little discussion with few from the public that was here. Uh, Alderman Key was here as well. Uh, I'm gonna say that number one, I'm proud that once again, we're not raising taxes. Uh, I want, I want the public to know. However, we're not your only taxing body, so please get your tax bill and look at it because we are not your only taxing body. There are other things that impact that. It has nothing to do with the city of Harvey, but we're dedicated to not raising taxes. Uh, we understood the budget. We took the opportunity to talk to our comptroller and ask a bunch of questions. Uh, I hate that you missed it, but if you still got questions, reach out to your alderman, reach out to me, come to another finance meeting, we'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you. And so before we, um, do the vote, first of all, I second what, uh, the fifth ward alderman said as far as the tax levy is concerned. I think it was in June of this year, um, we collectively made a pledge to our residents that we would not increase the levy for 2025. Taxes have been a very serious and important issue for many of our homeowners. Uh, we do have, uh, some commercial businesses that have refused to pay their taxes and have not paid their taxes for almost twenty years. Um, that portion is usually shifted over to the residential homeowners. But we do not want to put any more burden on our homeowners, uh, regardless of the situation, so we're not increasing the levy. So once again, when you look at your tax bill, um, that should be coming out, I think, in February. Um, keep in mind that there are fourteen other taxing bodies on your bill, uh, so that you can figure out, uh, if you see an increase, you know that the increase is not coming from the city of Harvey. So that being said.
May I interject just one more point?
Chair recognizes the sixth ward.
I was, uh, this was in the month of June, uh, and when you had your press conference and you made the initiative to, uh, tell the public that we were not gonna be increasing any taxes for fiscal year 2025. Uh, we were hoping that other municipalities would follow suit after what Harvey has taken the initiative to do. Um, don't know if that's occurred yet, but I'd like to say that this administration should be commended for taking that initiative not to increase any property taxes. We, we decided that we would do it for 2025. We may be able to do it for 2026. We gotta see how it works out in 2025 first. And I just wanted to say that, uh, I'm proud to be a part of that decision-making process uh, that we decided to go forth with. Thank you, man.
Well, while we, and normally we wouldn't do all this talking, so, but this is such an important issue to the homeowners. Um, that, you know, if we can get it, we only collect fifty-two percent of our property taxes. So just imagine if you were getting paid a hundred dollars a week and then your boss came to you and said, "Well, I can't give you a hundred dollars. Instead, I have to give you fifty-two dollars." And now you have to go home and figure out how you're going to operate, um, and function off of that amount. Um, so we only collect fifty-two percent. So if we can get those who owe us taxes, taxes, specifically, once again, those, those commercial properties that owe us taxes, we actually may be collecting more and be able to do just that, so. Let's, uh, be hopeful that that will be the case at some time in the future. So that being said, we have the motion, we have the second. You can cast your vote. Motion carries.
That is ordinance three, five, zero, three.
Next item on the agenda is an ordinance establishing remedies available to the city to address businesses operating in violation of the city's code. This ordinance amends chapter five dash zero two of the city code by adding a new subsection C authorizing the city to seek an injunction, temporary restraining order, and abatement or other appropriate actions to enjoin, abate, or stop any violation of this chapter. There is a motion by the third, second by the first. Is there any debate? Hearing none, cast your votes. Motion carries.
That is ordinance number three, five, zero, four.
Next is the, um, item is the omnibus of five. Item's number five, number six.
Or is it four? Four was an apartment.
Oh, my apologies. Um, excuse me, an ordinance, before we get there. Next item is an ordinance approving a special use permit for D Lopez Tire Shop at 16203 South Austin Street. There is a motion by the first, a second by the sixth. Is there any debate? Hearing none, then cast your vote.
That is ordinance number three, five, zero, five.
Thank you very much. And thank you for catching me on that. Um, next item is the omnibus of numbers five, six, and seven. Okay. So there's omnibus of five, six, and seven. We have a motion by the sixth ward, excuse me, and the second by the third. Is there any debate? Hearing none, or that should actually shouldn't be. Um, you may cast your vote. Passed. Um, the resolution, ordinance and the resolution?
Yes, resolution for item five is three, zero, nine, five. Uh, number six is ordinance number three, five, zero, six. And number seven is resolution number three, zero, nine, six.
Thank you very much. Next on the, um, agenda is public comment. Public comment is encouraged and appreciated. This is the only opportunity for the public to address the city council's agenda items and any other city-related business. In order to accomplish all business on the agenda and be respectful of everyone's time, council members will not engage in dialogue with individual members of the ordinance. And no immediate action will be taken on any public comment issue. No speaker may go in. Here's a per time for another speaker. Comments shall be courteous and respectful at all times. No person may use public comment for the purpose of campaigning or advertisement. This is not a question and answer time, and council cannot engage in conversation with the public. Questions and concerns about operations should be addressed with city staff during regular business hours. So first we will have Ryan Sinwellstein, followed by Mesurk Urban.
All right, good evening, everybody. Uh, many of you know this looks the drawing of the Harvey Historical Society. Many of you know about our campaign to stop the mayor's rural Central Park project on Merle Avenue. We are fighting to save people and the historic Ascension Church campus at our 153rd Merle from demolition. Just when we thought it could get worse, it did. On November 7th, a group of us went to what we thought was a WRT war meeting. Instead, we saw a circus. It was a spectacle worthy of a lyric opera in Chicago. Mayor Clark, Kerry Steele, and MWRD staff coordinated the biggest, most big show of support for a project we've ever seen. Mayor Clark used city employees on City Time to lie to our Harvey seniors to get them to this meeting. Joe Linkton, the mayor's senior activities director, and my former alderman coordinated, uh, the event and even spoke in favor of taking other seniors' homes. After the meeting settled, the seniors said they would never want other seniors' homes to be taken, but they just, they had no idea what was going on. They were promised a deal, a plus outing by the mayor and the city and the city staff. At least nine of the people commented in favor of displacing Harvey residents or city of Harvey employees and/or people owing favors to Mayor Clark. They were literally paid to be there and put on a show by the boss, Christopher Clark, all to take our seniors' homes and demolish one of the first racially integrated Catholic churches. Aldrich Estman, Brubisky Smith, Randall Ellen Rogers. What do you get from Clark? That's enough to make you ignore widows who are literally crying and pleading with you not to take their homes in their final years. Randall Ellen doesn't even show up to most meetings when he was at this one. Rogers doesn't answer any questions on the finance committee, but he was there. What is in it for you? We already have parks. We already have a park district. We don't need a new one. If this is about flood relief, how about we start with just sweeping the streets so the stormwater can drain? How about cleaning out and repairing the sewers we have? How about patching hopples that are big enough to Then, at the end of the meeting, Miss Steele dares to tell us that this is democracy. Okay, so. Then, at the end of the meeting, this steel dares to tell us that this is democracy. Okay, so let me get this straight. You had the mayor pay city staff with our money to deceive our most vulnerable, lonely seniors to make it work like they support putting other seniors out of their homes. Did you also tell those seniors that there's nothing stopping from Clark trying to take their homes next? Did you think about that, seniors? I bet you didn't mention that to them. Did you tell them that the M W R D gave you Mrs. Brimfield's house after acquiring it? I thought this was an M W R D project. Why does the city of Harvey now own all those homes on Merle? On what planet is this democracy? This sounds like Dick Tager Clark is desperate to get his hands on that five million dollar immigrant at any cost. Why, Mr. Mayor, are you so desperate for this money? You don't need more money to waste. You don't need to displace residents or demolish historic buildings. You need to do your job and be accountable to the people. As I've mentioned, I was here earlier for the finance meeting and they made everything sound so glowing, but to remind people, we haven't seen anything about the finances on paper, so please change.
Thank you. Next is Mazurk Urban, followed by Irene Vitten.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mazurk Urban, former trustee of the Harvey Public Library. Uh, I have a couple concerns, uh, in regards to the last city council meeting where, uh, Kobe Chapman, Kobe Chapman was called out to be censured, uh, by Dominique Randewell. Uh, I'd just like to point out something. Uh, the Roberts Rule of Order is there for a reason. It is not to be misused for the convenience of aldermen who don't agree with it or the mayor of how it's arranged. Um, this is crazy. Uh, whenever she asked a question, she shut down. Uh, the votes are shoved through, the motion is made. You got that computer pad thing up there where you're shoving things through where a question can't be asked. Here's the thing, you guys. You all draw attention to your own self when somebody asks a question. What's so bad about answering the question? Just answer it. You're gonna vote the way that you want to vote anyway. So just answer the question, practice the transparency, don't violate Roberts' Rule of Order, and, um, and then things will be a whole lot better for the residents because all we want to know is what's going on and everything is like under lock and key all the time. This is, this is not what I voted for. This is not what I want. Uh, also, to piggyback on that, uh, censuous lady, you know, Dominique Randewell, uh, you, I don't know what you're taking. I don't know if it's medicine or if it's a controllable substance, but you got up in the meeting and you hollered out, "I gotta pee", and they had to stop the meeting. That's not the way that a meeting is supposed to be run. You could have went up to the mayor and said, "I need, uh, to, uh, for you to, to, to stop the meeting for a minute so I can go out and come back." Now, that is something that somebody needs to be censured on. You know, uh, I hope that wasn't your ideal to, to do the censure that somebody else told you to do it. Uh, and then at least I could just say, "Well, you're under the influence of, because you know that probably your money for, uh, special events with the city would be withheld" or something like that, but you guys gotta be better. You just, you're not thinking for yourself, is basically what it is. Uh, the levy, the four point nine nine percent that Cook County allows you to, uh, to charge every year, I'd like to see those numbers. I'd like to see if you did a minus four point nine nine percent from, 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 uh, last year's levy to this year's levy after done it, to be sure that what you said is actually true, because I don't believe it.
Next is Irene Vitten, followed by Jeremy Harris.
Uh, yes, hello, my name is Irene Vitten. I live in one fifty-two oh four from Idaho. And Mayor, I appreciate you. You're on a wonderful job.
Thank you, wait, hold, 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 no, 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 no. No, absolutely not. Thank you very much. No, you can, you can talk to them after me, okay, and thank them. You did agree that, did you, uh, that you? Okay, well, maybe you put you under. Next, uh, is Jeremy Harris, followed by John Bradley.
Good evening to the honorable Christopher Clark and this council. Lord, thank you all, all the efforts that you all have been doing to try to bring this city back out of the dust. I was at your last council meeting and I saw elected officials, my block load captain, as more citizens holding inflammatory green poster signs and citing inflammatory comments on these signs. I am so glad that you use your power as my servants to stop the confusion. I want to say something. I'm gonna say it twice. I'm gonna say it slow. In the Holy Bible, in James, chapter three, three to eighteen, tell you where wisdoms come from. James three, chapter three, verses three to eighteen, tell you, let you know what the Holy Bible say where wisdom come from. It can come from heaven and it can come from the devil. That's James three, chapter thirteen, chapter three, thirteen to eighteen. Go read for yourself and see what that demonstration reflected. Did it reflect heaven or did it, uh, reflect the devil? I want you to keep on standing up for the citizens of Harvey. I was elected official as a trustee of the Harvey Public Library District for six years. I've been in this community since May sixth nineteen sixty-nine and in my home since August first nineteen seventy-five. Thank you for being a refugee for me and my children, because I came from Chicago, born and raised. Thank you. Keep up the good work. And I'm, I'm sorry. Please forgive me. Please forgive me for being elected, coming to this board meetings. Please forgive me. I've been dealing with some medical problems, but you're gonna see me soon. Real soon. God bless you all. We believe in God. God, we trust.
Thank you. Next is, um, John Bradley. We're gonna bring him. We'll bring the mic over there if he wants to, uh.
What's your name?
I can sit right here, man.
Okay. We're gonna bring the mic to you, though.
I want to applaud you and the city council for seeing the taxes from the businesses that have been paying in years past. All we want to do is say thank you, continue that work, and hopefully whatever support you need from, uh, community citizens, we will be organized in, in your support, particularly with every mayor, uh, every, uh, alderman, uh, person. We appreciate your work.
Thank you very much. Next is Ruby Donahue, followed by Suzanne Amy.
I'm not going to let my words be in vain. We have to do better. We have to support. We live here and many of us do pay taxes. Those that don't hear my word, get it together. We cannot run a city without money. And it has to be done in an orderly way and understood what is going to be done. We work very hard, all of us. I'm going to say it whatever way you do it. You are out there late. I have been a citizen of Harvey for fifty-five years. I have seen it come and I've seen it go. But this is the best administration that I have lived here where there has been some kind of communication. And I'm talking about written communication. We've never had it before. I'm saying, go and look at what you're doing. Go and honor to the fields and see what's been done. See what has been accomplished. Don't always look at the critical parts that you want to see in your group together. We don't need no clicks unless you're clicking together. And this has not been done since the second part of this administration. We need to make the change and we, as a whole, will do it. We will never go down. We will never be belittled, belittled over and over again and the media making light of us as a whole. No. Our mayor is excellent in comparison to what we have had. Now, you might be looking at one thing, but I'm looking at another, and there are many others that are looking at the other side. Go out there in yourself and see what you're doing. Do you have a car wash, a new car wash? Do you have anything on Dixie Highway from one forty-nine to one hundred and fifty-ninth street that has been repaid? Do you have the law that has been built? That was our taxpayers' dollars, part of it at least. And that's what we need to be looking at, looking at the net, at the positive things, not always at the negative things. That's the wrong way to go. I've been here long enough in this life to know the good and the bad. And I can see more good than I can see bad. We have to work together. Stop being critical. Get out of here. Stop criticizing one another. Love one another. That is what life is all about.
Next up is Suzanne Amy.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, to our honorable mayor, the city council, and the city's administrative staff. My name is Suzanne Amy. I reside at one four nine three two Cooper Avenue. And I'd just like to thank the mayor and his administrative staff for all of the great work that they're doing. They are doing such a great job that I volunteer my time. Because I'm being paid to work elbow to elbow with these people because they dig in and they get the job done. I see it every day. And I am proud to say, after living in Harvey almost forty years, that we finally have an administration that is moving forward and doing something for the residents. So I applaud you for your work. Keep up the good work. I don't know about the rhetoric that Ryan speaks. I don't know about what Mazurk is talking about. Because if he knew anything about the Roberts Rule of Order, you know, when you come to a city council, it's just all about business. You should not be disrupting the order of business because you can't move forward if you can't get anything passed. You all have a lesson.
Thank you. Next is the mayor of coming.
We're not paid.
So, we started off this meeting with me praying and being grateful and thankful to God for everything that he has done. I hope some of you absorb that, um, and internalize it. Because it guides my remarks right now. There's a lot of things that I could say about some of the things that are said that are negative toward this city. I don't really care about the things that you say is negative towards me because once again, that's like wild wolf and ducks back. You don't understand what's going on, who you're dealing with. First of all, you're dealing with a steel worker, okay? That's number one. First, first, first career steel worker. Okay, we built iron tough. You're also dealing with an attorney. I know a lot of, a lot of you guys depend on, you know, what the situation is. You don't want to recognize the fact that your, that your mayor is actually educated and actually practices as an attorney, which I don't know why, because I, I know I would be proud of it, but, but the simple fact is, you can't get me. Can't do it. So you might as well stop because you're gonna lose. But when I sit back and I'm looking, all of, and wait, hold on, back up, back up. And then I got him a full armor. And the full armor is what protects me, okay? It keeps me from all of the naysayers and negativity and the things that people will want to do. Those principalities, most powers, and places that are unseen. Yeah, he got me. So the only advice I can give is the, is the advice that I give a lot is, if you don't know him, get to know him. If you know him, have a relationship with him. Give him a call every now and then. Tell him what you want, okay? But we have seen some tremendous things happen in this past year. Uh, and I think it's so many, so much, and so many that, um, we would probably be here for another time meeting if I went through everything that we've done. But the first thing I want to do is I want to thank this council. Through it all, they can see you guys have, have performed in a way that honestly I have not succeeded. I didn't even expect myself at the very beginning, but we have learned, you know, how to work together as a council to do better for our, um, our community. So thank you so much. I also want to thank all of our departments and the leadership in those departments. Because, once again, we just mentioned that, one, we collect fifty-two percent of our taxes. Two, is that we still did not increase the levy of taxes on our residents. And even though we operate with a little bit, those departments and those department heads are able to get a lot done. And I want to give you an example of that. Um, this past week, I had the opportunity to go out to the residents at the Jesse Jackson Junior East Building, which is on one hundred and thirty-first right off of Brooklyn. And, um, and aside the fact that we had a really good time, did you tell y'all I was dancing with them? But they asked, uh, a question. They said, "Hey, look, can you cut down all of the brush that's behind the building?" And as soon as I left the building, I went straight to public works. And I talked to Rick and I talked to Crystal, and they said that they would be on it right away. And the very next, I was able to report to the third world woman that they would be on it the very next day, and they started on it the very next day. Um, and has done a tremendous job, so much so that I've got calls from those residents and from others who've seen it, just amazed at what we have done. Um, but speaking of the Jesse Jackson Junior East and West Building, that is another thing to be grateful for because, what was it? The previous term, there was thirty-five million that was spent by Pola, Hood, Cook County, uh, by working with this administration on the Jesse Jackson, on the YMCA building on one hundred and fifty-fifth and Central. That whole building was overhauled and redoubled as far as the residential spaces are concerned. And it improved the quality of life for the people who live there. Well, then Pola, the owners of that building, they're also the owners of the Jesse Jackson Junior East and West Building. And they made a promise that after they finished the Center Street building, that they will be going over to Jesse Jackson Junior East and West next, and that's exactly what they did. And the reason why I was there the other day was because we were celebrating the completion of that project. And they had a lot of band and Michael Jackson, uh, personally to come out. Um, and we got a chance to talk to the, the residents, of course, the third world woman. I think Joe, you were there too, weren't you, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Uh, was there as well to celebrate, um, improving the quality of life for people, specifically seniors in our community. We also recently celebrated the, the reopening of the one hundred and forty-seven. We also recently celebrated the, the reopening of the hundred and forty-seventh street metro station. Um, and we're hoping to see more travel through there. A hundred and fifty-fourth street is, is very close to its completion. And for those who, who, yeah, my mother used to tell me, "No good deed goes unpunished." I keep trying to push against that. We started the work in, what was it? Sometime, I think it was the second meeting of September, is when the work on uh, hundred and fifty-fourth street started. And that work is almost complete. Um, I'd say probably the next few weeks, is that correct? Um, it should be, it should be complete. But I wanna make note that this is a project that has not been done for over one hundred years. Okay? One hundred years. So when we went to do the work, we found the bricks that were still there. The charlie tracks that were still there from a time long gone in the city of Harvey. And so it took a little bit extra time and extra money, am I correct, to be able to make those corrections? But that is something that we are grateful for and we know that can get done. We know that if we as a, as a community and as a council stick together, we can move forward and get things done. Next door, Harvey Lofts, okay? Other than the fact that they have a supply chain issue right now going on, the lofts will be open soon. They should've been open by the end of October, but they have a supply chain issue. Now for those who don't understand what that means, it means that they had ordered some parts because of, um, how things changed after COVID. You know, you don't necessarily get things instantaneously anymore. So they are waiting on, uh, those parts to come in and once those parts come in, they should be there. Also Dixie Highway. Dixie Highway, uh, was redone. And for those of you who have not taken it around, please take it by, cause it's smooth and simple, okay? And they also added more NDA compliance to, um, to Dixie Highway. I'm gonna leave it at that, um, but I did want you to pull, pull out a few more things. In twenty nineteen, we stopped the sale of liquor at five o'clock in the morning. There were so many people, believe it or not, who, who thought that that was an insane idea. We stopped selling it until five o'clock in the morning and we reduced the sales to twelve midnight. And at twelve midnight, all businesses that were selling liquor had closed. Um, except for, of course, the gas stations, which were still allowed to stay open, but were not allowed to sell liquor. I believe that has had a tremendous impact on our city, okay? Um, both socially and spiritually, if I can say so myself. But this year, I am, and because of it, we, we, we started to see crime slowly but surely go down. Um, and I remember that every night in my house, I used to have to go to bed to some gunshots. It's like I couldn't go to sleep if I hadn't had those gunshots in my life. But that has changed. And it's changed because the police department has made some changes, but it's also changed because of what the council initially took and did back then at that particular point in time. And so, once again, I wanna let you know, homicides are down thirty-three percent. Burglaries are down fifty-two percent. Kidnappings are down fifty-seven percent. Um, domestics are down eleven percent and batteries are down sixteen percent. So at the beginning of the year, there'll probably be a, a Chicago Tribune or maybe a, a Daily Southtown article, they're probably just gonna try to say something dangerous about the city of Harvey because they always try to classify us that way. But, but particularly keep in mind that crime is going down in the city of Harvey. It, it's not just the police, but it's also the people. The people are paying more attention to what's going on in their neighborhood. They're starting to have a certain degree of pride that says, "If I see something, I'm going to say something." So I would encourage everyone to do so. And then finally, if you do not read our wonderful newsletters, um, I think someone mentioned that we do it right. You have the newsletter that you can read that comes out monthly. You have a recap of the council meetings that come in your water bill that you can read to find out what's going on. Uh, but this year, we also instituted with our Communications Department, a video newsletter. So you can take that same newsletter that you read and if you go to our YouTube page, when will you even start to sign up? Is there anything on our, on our, uh, website? Or you can go to our website at cityofharveyil.gov. That's cityofharveyil.gov. And you can sign up to receive our monthly newsletter digitally. And you'll know when it comes out and you'll be able to see the video newsletter as well. It is quite entertaining, um, and quite informative. So I'm gonna leave it at that, um, no, can't leave it at that. Finally, I wanna thank all of the residents who have been extremely patient, who has given, who has given their support throughout the year. Um, those who have sent cards and letters, well wishes, those who stopped by, um, meet the mayor. Some not to ask for anything, but she has to sometimes bring us cookies, muffins or stuff that I have no business eating, um, but they did that because they cared. Um, those things never go overlooked and I just want you to know that we, uh, we greatly appreciate all of our residents. We will continue into twenty twenty-five to, to do even, somebody said, "We gotta do better." We're gonna do better. We're gonna do more. And for whoever did say that we should do better, we hope that you join us in doing just that. So on that note, I will end my comment. And, wait a minute, hold on. Yeah. I didn't get to say anything last time, that's why I took a little bit more time today. But uh, they signed on a jet, a motion to adjourn? Oh, no, no, wait a minute. I wanna thank you guys. So, a family member of, of mine, we like to say that God is always in the blessing business and business is good. And every time, I'm telling you, talk about that ram in the bush, man, he got ram after ram after ram. So I'm gonna read this to you, uh, and we can end it on this, because I, I need you to do something else for me, council. What I hold in my hand is a resolution for improvement under the highway code from the Illinois Department of Transportation. It just came in the other day, so we weren't able to, we didn't have enough time to get it on this agenda because it just came in. But it is for continued improvements of a hundred and fifty-fourth street, uh, from Route sixteen sixty-four, from Broadway to Wood Street. Um, it says a full depth road re reconstruction, new curbs, other sidewalks improvements, storm sewer improvements, green infrastructure, storm water, so there's additional work that needs to be done after we get the asphalt down and everything like that. So there is hereby appropriated, I'm gonna say it again, this is the resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code through the Illinois Department of Transportation, that there is hereby appropriated the sum of one million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. No, no, just a minute, no, that's, that's, don't do that, don't do that. So, um, yeah, yeah, talk about rams in the bush, okay? And y'all not, y'all not understand, when you got a hundred and fifty-five million dollars worth of deficit, when you got fifty-two percent of your taxes are being collected, when there's so many financial challenges in the city, it's things like this that we really need, um, that make, that make a big difference. So what we will be doing is, we will be asking for you to return on Monday because we need to have another special meeting in order to deal with this particular issue. Um, it'll be brief, quick, but the bottom line is, we do need to get this passed. We would've had it on the agenda for today if we hadn't received it in time. But it just shows you that, you know, we have the, the support, we have the relationships, we have others out there advocating for us, advocating for our city, um, so that we can give lessons, uh, like this. So I think that's pretty valuable, a lesson there, so. On that note, if there is nothing else for the gentleman to order, we see a motion to adjourn. Motion by the fifth, second by the first, all in favor.